Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting of Bethlehem City Council for Wednesday, June 3rd, 2027 PM here in Town Hall. Would all please rise for the Fudge Allegiance? Thank you.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. She's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Callahan. Mr. Cologne.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey-Smith.
Here.
Ms. Negron.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Dr. Van Wirt.
Here.
Mr. Waldron.
Here.
Prior to the consideration of our regular agenda items this evening, City Council will conduct two public hearings. Public hearing one is the public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed use of the funds received through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant in the amount of $146,000. Public hearing number two, the second public hearing is to receive public comment on the request for the intermunicipal transfer of Restaurant Liquor License Number R-18906 from Sagro Bistro LLC, Hellertown, North Hampton County, to Wilbur Restaurant LLC, 202 Wine Dot Street, Bethlehem, North Hampton County. Public hearing number one is called to order. I will now recognize Mark DeLuzio, Chief of Police, to discuss the proposed Bureau of Justice Assistance 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant in the amount of $146,000. Good evening, Chief. Thank you for joining us.
Let me get to my grant paperwork. This is a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, and what it will do is, it's for $146,016. And what it will do is, it will be used to resupply the Bethlehem Police Department for the supplies we used during this virus season this year, and also to update equipment, communication equipment. We were one of about 30 different agencies in the state that received part of this grant. The communication equipment we're looking at is to update our outdated car radios, which are attached to the North Hampton County 911 Center, which we use almost every day. And we're also going to buy an amount of supplies from gloves to masks to spit covers and other cleaners and sanitizers that we could use for this year as this continues and into next year for whatever comes next year. That's basically a quick summary of the grant.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a breakdown on those two different categories as far as the dollar amount for each one?
Yes, there's a preliminary breakdown.
It doesn't have to be exact, but just, or even a rough percentage amount for each of the $146,000?
About $4,000 to $5,000 in protective equipment, and the rest are for mobile in-car radios. Each radio unit's worth about $5,300. We would have to be updating them normally, but this grant came along. And one of the things was communication during emergencies, declared emergencies. The other part covered N95 respirators, surgical masks, nitrate gloves, face shield, other cleaning and equipment and PPE equipment that police use. And we use a lot of this stuff every year with the normal flu seasons and any time during the year with people with certain diseases.
Chief, can you pull the mic down just a little bit toward yourself? Thank you. The in-car radios, will that outfit the entire fleet?
That will outfit, I believe, 35 or 36 cars.
Of how many?
Of, we have about, I think, 60-some vehicles. Not every police car now has a radio either. Like, the SRO ones don't. Every officer does have a portable. I don't have one in my head. Really don't need a car radio anymore. The portables are so strong. But the main cars with the computers that the patrol guys use, those are the ones that have the main radio in.
I'm sorry, I understand that correctly. So, this grant is for new radios in cars?
Yes.
But at the same time, those radios aren't necessary?
No, no, I said not necessary in every police car. In the patrol fleet, they're necessary.
Understood.
For a detective's car or for my unit, I don't believe in spending $5,000 on a radio. I have a portable. The newer portables we have are very powerful and they do what I need. The other radio system's hooked in with the computer system and with everything else in a patrol vehicle.
I understand. And as far as the amount for the direct COVID response, as far as the PPE, what, I imagine you're tracking how much the city has spent thus far directly related to that effort within your department?
Yes, we are. And I do have those numbers. I send them to Michelle Keaki, who's doing the city's numbers.
Will this grant cover the amount that has been spent, or is it in surplus to that?
No, this will be in, this will be for next year's and extra stuff. The stuff we have spent, the equipment of PPEs this year will be covered when we file with the state under the Governor's Declaration for reimbursement.
Understood. And how is the level of equipment supply at this point?
We're steady. We have a good supply. We have a lot of donations, actually, from people, businesses and corporations in Bethlehem.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of council related to the public hearing number one for the chief? Dr. Van Wirt?
Can you just tell me, what is the strategy in terms of the utilization of PPE for your officers? How, are they, what are they using? How frequently are they renewed? When do they put them on?
Each officer is issued an N95 mask. As soon as that mask is contaminated or the officer believes they need a new one, we issue them a new one. They all wear the gloves. Every other type of PPE we have, it's up to the officer, all medical calls, any time they're dealing with somebody. Now, there are some occasions where the cop can't, if it's an in-progress call and he pulls up, he just can't put the mask on or the gloves on. He's got to engage. That goes with the job. But we are using everything we have, and so far, I knock on wood, we haven't had an officer come down with the virus, or a city paramedic, or a firefighter.
That's good to know.
One of the things we start at the very beginning is put your mask on. If in doubt, wear the mask.
So when they're in a car with a suspect who they might be taking in, do they have extra surgical masks to give to whoever's in the back of the car?
Yes, we do. So, we have these. We also have the regular N95 masks that the officer uses. We also have the spit hoods too that we use for uncooperative people.
And many people don't know this, you probably do, I just want to make sure that the donations that you've received, that the N95 masks with valve are not helpful in spreading, in stopping the spread of disease. You have to wear a surgical mask over those valves because it was, it's a one-way valve and it's unfiltered. So, as long as you're using donations from people, make sure that if they're using those valved N95s, you have to have a surgical mask over it.
Most of the ones the officers are using, we purchased. We were able to purchase early. So, we got our purchases in, or we got them through the state or federal government. So, I mean, they're the good N95 masks that we're using with the officers. And like I said, I'm very happy to report, so far, nobody came down with it. We had a lot of officers tested for exposure, but nothing, which is good.
And while things seem to have peaked here in terms of COVID, I would, although it's, I feel like you have an alternative source of funds for replenishing your PPE, but I think this is going to be an ongoing slow burn. Like, this is, this is not like, you know, poof. So, I, it just seems like there's an awful lot of money spent on radios and just a tiny little bit spent on PPE. It might, it might be good to perhaps double your PPE just in an emergency, because I think this is something we're going to be struggling with for a while.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. To that point, are these numbers locked in as far as, would you consider removing one radio and taking that amount and essentially doubling?
Yeah, these numbers aren't locked in anywhere. This is just in a preliminary application, and I'm saying that yes, you do have this money. It's put aside for you and then going through the process.
Understood. So, can we, can, within this application, do you need, when you request these numbers, do you have any leeway after the fact, after the grant is in fact given to the city or awarded?
Yeah, we have up to the date we ordered the supplies. We could change these numbers.
So, if there was an uptick in the fall potentially or later on that you wanted to make sure you had a reserve, then you could in fact maybe take one radio out and, you know, one radio pays for as much PPE as you've already requested in the grant?
Exactly what you said. We could, we can, if it gets real bad, real bad, and we have to take four or five radios out, we can easily do it and get whatever supplies we need in here.
Does, and this grant, can, can this only be used for, for the police department, or can it be used for all of public safety?
It's only for law enforcement.
Okay, law enforcement, so not EMS or fire?
Yes, that's correct.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of council relating to the public hearing number one?
President Waldron, can I have a comment about PPE?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
I just wanted to make, bring on other questions from council. When you're talking about that particular grant, I just wanted to note there are other grants in the works that have already been awarded for PPE that can be used across the spectrum. So, the fire, Chief Aki's working on one now that's, was over $30,000. It's for PPE to date, anything to be used immediately as well as stockpile. So, there is significant stockpile and it's being quarterbacked by Chief Novotnik, Emergency Management, to make sure they're collected, they're being stockpiled in City Hall in a safe, secure place, so they can distribute them across police, fire, and first responders as needed. The mask that the rest of City Hall has, we have plenty in donations, are kept in Human Resources and available to any City Hall workers, whenever, in different sizes and formats. But the specialized ones are being kept at a, where they feel between these grants and also the county support at a very, what they would call comfortable level for now and also for the future. That's, I just wanted to add to that, that this isn't the only source that has to do with the masks as well as the, what do we call the?
Gowns.
The gowns as well are added in that other grant. So, there is some significant level of funding at this time. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anything else from members of council?
I just want to check my audio. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Callahan, and if we could let the record show, Mr. Callahan is with us this evening for roll call. Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to apologize for being late. I was, I am doing so many Zoom meetings. I was, I was on, I was going into Zoom and I was typing in the access code in the Zoom and we're on a, I guess, go-to and Zoom are completely different. I apologize for being late.
Understood. Thank you for joining us. All right. I'll now recognize the public for comment.
I'm zoomed out officially.
Good to know. It looks like you're in Bethlehem and not at the beach, so glad you're here with us.
I am in Bethlehem.
Yeah. I'll now recognize public for comment. If you did not sign up to speak, which we don't have anyone signed up for the public comment, the phone is now live. If anyone would like to weigh in on this specific subject only, which is public hearing number one. I think that may have been someone for another comment period. So, that number is 610-997-7963. That is specifically and only for public hearing number one, which is the Bureau of Justice Assistance 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant. We will have another public comment for the liquor license transfer, as well as first public comment on any subject not being voted on this evening for any topic, as well as any resolution or on this agenda. Bethlehem City Council.
Hi, I'm calling in for public comment.
We're accepting comment right now at this point for our, if you can mute your YouTube feed, that would be helpful. We're accepting public comment for the public hearing, which is for the Bureau of Justice Assistance, 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant. Do you wish to make comment on that? Public comment?
I do.
Okay. Please, if you would, give your name and address for the record and give your comments to council.
Yep. So, my name is Mary Lou Hatcher. I live at 925 Prospect Avenue in Bethlehem. And I had actually emailed in to the clerk who told me I was the fourth person signed up, so there may be a little glitch there. But nevertheless, my comment is this. First of all, I wanted to thank the chief for the way the police department responded over the weekend to the events that were happening here in Bethlehem and across the nation. I heard from many people that they were really appreciative of how the Bethlehem Police Department was present. They were non-threatening. They felt like a safe and respectful presence. They were not in riot gear. They were in regular policing gear, and people felt, I think, very appreciative of that. So, Chief, I wanted to thank you for the planning that went into it.
You're welcome.
I think we do have a community policing model, and it is a proactive strategy that is a good one. So, thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
I also wanted to thank the mayor for his comments this morning in the morning call. And related to the subject before you on the coronavirus, it is heartening to hear all the things the city has done to put in place PPE equipment. And I wondered if there was some thought being given to helping provide that equipment to marginalize people the police might be responding to in the homeless community, the immigrant community, et cetera, folks who might not have the equipment themselves but be helped by it, keeping the law enforcement officers safer and keeping those folks safer. So, I just wanted to raise as a possibility that law enforcement have some of those resources on hand to actually distribute to the people that they were interacting with. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you so much for making this space available.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Hatcher. Good evening. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment on the public hearing number one specifically at this point? We'll have other opportunities for comment on other issues as we move along in our agenda, but this is for the Bureau of Justice Assistance Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant. Is there anyone on the YouTube stream who'd like to call in? That number is 610-997-7963. Seeing none, the proposed grant approval resolution is on the agenda tonight as line item 10B. Thank you, Chief. The public hearing is adjourned. Public hearing number two is called to order. I will now recognize Attorney Theodore J. Zeller to make the presentation on the proposed intermunicipal liquor license transfer from Sagro Bistro LLC to Wilbur Restaurant LLC for the premises at 202 Wine Dot Street.
Thank you, Honorable Counsel and Honorable Mayor. I'm here to represent Wilbur Restaurant LLC. That is a Pennsylvania LLC that is owned right now by Mr. John Noble, who is a local resident and businessman. Would be a restaurant partner. Once we finish those negotiations, will be added to the LLC. Unfortunately, we can't disclose them quite yet, but we're very excited about this project. This project involves the Wilbur Mansion, which was originally built by E.T. Wilbur back in 1865, went through renovations in the 1890s, and was purchased by the Masons in the 1920s. Mr. Noble purchased the grounds approximately four years ago. And typically, when I'm doing these hearings, it's, projects are not as advanced as this current one. This, this project has actually gone through zoning, obtained the necessary variances for parking, has been approved for a small boutique hotel, an ancillary space of supporting restaurant and event space. The restaurant is defined, and I'll speak about that momentarily. The events, the event space not as much, given the new coronavirus and all that we're learning on what the new restaurant world may be, and I'll speak more about that. This is also obtained planning approval, and it has obtained local BRIA approval for CRIS designation. The Wilbur Mansion is part of the Fountain Hill Overlay Historic District. The hotel is going to consist of nine rooms, and that will begin on the second floor. The restaurant is approximately, is going to be on the ground floor. It's 3,500 square feet. It is a remarkable property. I've walked it. Obviously, this is, the Masons purchased it in the 20s. They did not necessarily have a use for the fixed mansion and built the lodge that is on the property. If you want, I believe in your packet, you should have three exhibits. One with an immediate aerial overview, one backing up a little bit showing more of the surrounding neighborhood, but in the last, a rendering of the facility. If you're looking at, I believe, exhibit one, I can, I think I can do this if it shows up on my camera. It's not showing up too well. But, you know, the largest part, the largest building on the property right now is the lodge, and that will, that will be demolished. It will be, it will be replaced by an addition, which will house the commercial kitchen in addition to the event space. The thinking is that it's going to be more flexible indoor/outdoor space, given what our future restaurant operations will look like. Again, that first floor is approximately 3,500 square foot. It is in remarkable condition. The original woodwork is remarkable tile. Is only, really leads one to the conclusion, walking, walking through it and also, which is very, which is absolutely consistent with the plan, that this is going to be a high-end destination restaurant. Goal is to make this really the nicest restaurant in the Lehigh Valley that everybody in the Lehigh Valley will want to go to and even draw from the surrounding areas. You know, it's got ample parking. In fact, there was a slight change to the plan from the original proposal that even increased more of the parking. So, it's got ample parking to support this facility. There will, there's also a basement. There may be limited room down there to be usable, maybe for some type of wine cellar, chef's dinner table type of combination. I have John Noble with me this evening. John, why don't you?
Mr. Noble, I don't know if you are watching the YouTube stream at home, but we're getting some feedback when your microphone is on. So, if you're able to close the YouTube stream. Yeah, I think your YouTube stream feed.
I go to meeting right now.
Okay. Well, we're getting some feedback on your end when your microphone is open.
This, this facility will support nine restaurant rooms and will be approximately 100 restaurant seats. That doesn't include the addition, which we're still evaluating what that will look like. I have John Noble with me here. John, do you want to maybe try your mic again, or hopefully we don't get feedback?
This is Sydney Barr.
Yeah, we're still.
John, did I get, did I get all that right?
Are you getting feedback now?
Yes.
As far as the use of the hotel and the restaurant?
Yes. At this point, I would like to open it up from questions from council. Again, this is an application for moving liquor license from, what was it, Sagro Bistro in Hellertown to the city of Bethlehem. Again, this project's somewhat unique in where we're at in the process and that it's obtained all these approvals. Typically, I am presenting these matters when we're, we don't have any of those approval yet and explaining to council that, and this still remains the fact that this liquor license approval and application is completely independent of complying with zone, of complying with CRIS, complying with building codes and building permits. So, with that in mind, I would like to open it up to any questions, and again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. If you could just give us an update of where you are in that process as far as receiving approval from CRIS, planning, zoning, and the like, as far as what is still required to, to open the project?
I'll let John speak after, just to confirm what I know, but zoning is obtained. That has been approved. Planning has approved it. Local BRIA has, local BRIA has approved it twice. CRIS has approved, the CRIS State has approved it once. It's back for the second, which was the, the tweak to the plan to reduce a little bit of the hotel rooms and increase a little bit of the restaurant size. And that's pending with the state, but we do not expect any issues with that. I think in fact, Mr. Noble has already obtained NPDES permits. So, John, do you want to take it from there as to, you know, what are other additional permits you see the need before you can open the project?
Yeah, okay. So, I said pretty much got everything correct on where we stand with the project. Give everyone an update. We actually hope to have this going even faster, but the virus right now has changed how we look at the restaurant. It's even changed how we look at the sequence of this project. This project is about a four-and-a-half acre project. It includes this land along Cherokee Street, which will be an apartment building. We've kind of shifted gears. Two months ago, we recognized that we weren't quite sure what was going on with restaurants. So, we've now done some finished-up design work on the apartment building, and we're hoping to actually start site work in about four to five months. It will be inclusive of all land around Wilbur Mansion. Some temple come down. And we still have the footprint of the new addition that we're going to use for the commercial kitchen and the outdoor inward dining venue. We're still in the design process because we just don't understand totally how this virus affects it. But what we're doing is we're trying to position ourselves so that we can start this project this year and hopefully know exactly where we're going and how it finished toward the end of next year.
Thank you, Mr. Noble. We are still having some trouble making things out. So, if we're going to continue a back-and-forth dialogue, we might need to go audio-only on our end. Our IT guy is thinking that your internet connection might be a little bit slow. So, I don't know if you have a cellphone near you or a home line even. We can go, you can keep your audio feed on, but I can call you through my phone next to me and we can, we can talk that way if you want to, if you're open to that. So, actually, if you want to call me, that might be, that might be better. Yeah, I'll give you that.
John, John, why don't you try this? If you have your cellphone right next to your microphone there, it could, that could be causing interference in and of itself.
But there is some lag in your, in your video too. So, on our end, our IT guy is thinking that it is your, your internet connection might be a little bit slow, and that might be the lag that we're seeing.
I'm sorry about that.
Yeah. So, if you're able to call in right now, we can have an audio conversation and we can forego the go-to meeting. So, that way, we're all still able to hear you pretty clearly and we can have a back-and-forth conversation.
President Waldron, were you able to hear me clearly?
It's, the feedback is too overwhelming to, for us to really make it out, to have a fair conversation here. So, if you don't mind giving us a call, if you have your cellphone or home landline in front of you, that number is 610-997-7963.
Were you able to hear me clearly?
Yes, Mr. Zeller. We're able to hear, council's been all able to hear you clearly. It's just we're having a bit. It's just we're, we're having a, a bit of an echo and feedback, uh, Mr. Noble's end.
I hear it.
So again, Mr. Noble, that phone number is six one zero nine nine seven seven nine six three. Yep. Hey, Mr. Noble. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, let me just shut down my.
We, we can hear you loud and clear. If you want to leave the video on, it's, that's.
Yeah, let the video on, turn off the volume.
Great. This is, this is much better. Thank you for being flexible and doing that.
No problem. This is an interesting time.
To say the least. If you're able to just kind of give us a rundown of where you're at as far as the process and in the sequence, obviously there's a lot of moving parts and, uh, understandably things are up in the air on a lot of ends as you're waiting for government response on a lot of ends and, and sometimes those responses can take longer than expected due to the, the pandemic that's about right now. So if you're able to just give us a general update of where the project is overall, separate from where we're at with the liquor control board issue.
So, so the project has gone through planning and zoning Bethlehem with approvals and we have a fully approved NPDS permit that is inclusive of the additional parking space that we've added to the lower site. It was a two-phased NPDS permit. The thought was always because the mansion is on a lower part of the parcel that we'd be doing that part of our project first. But what has happened is because the restaurant world is, is a little bit confusing right now. We don't know exactly what's happened. So what we've done is we've kind of shifted gears a little bit and we're getting ourselves poised to know how we'll fully design the restaurant, uh, probably within about six months. Uh, but we're moving forward right now with the upper part of the lot. It's a four and a half acre site. So we'll be, uh, starting the site work hopefully within about four to five months on the entire site, which will be inclusive of the apartment building. It's, it's on the top part of the site and we're leaving ourselves with flexibility then to design the, uh, the new addition on the Wilbur Mansion. We're not quite exactly sure how that is going to appear. We know that how the kitchen is going to be, but we don't know the, whether outdoor space will, will be an absolute premium or just the ability to have space that can be open to the outdoors. So what we're trying to do is, is move forward, which we are right now, um, and leaving ourselves with flexibility then to finalize the design of the actual addition on the Wilbur Mansion a little bit later this year.
Understood. Thank you for that update. And can you talk about what the restaurant will look like as far as kind of the operating hours, the style of service, um, will there be outdoor seating? And then specifically with focus on the alcohol that will be served there? What kind of alcohol and how will that be managed?
So the Wilbur Mansion, um, as this would be a lot easier if we had some visuals, but the first floor of the Wilbur Mansion is about a thirty-five hundred square foot open floor of, of literally a mansion. So you had, you had dining, you had pillars, you had all sorts of, uh, rooms in that level. So what, what we've done is the upper two floors are going to turn into nine rooms of, of a boutique hotel. The focus of the hotel will be a, a food service type hotel where if you're coming into this hotel, basically you're coming in not just for a, a room in Bethlehem and see all, all of what Bethlehem has, but you're also coming in to get a level of food service, which is, is not quite as prevalent in the area when you combine it with hotel rooms. The entire first floor will be dining areas because all of the new kitchen facility will be in the new addition off the back of the mansion. Uh, we will have a, a full-service bar with, within the footprint of the thirty-five hundred square feet and the ability then to serve, uh, the area adjacent to the new kitchen and that thirty-five hundred square feet with a full alcohol availability. The entire R area, we, we're orienting toward the, the front of the mansion. I don't know if you, you've gone by, there's actually a, a large Tiffany stained glass window in the front of the mansion. Uh, that room used to be the biller room for Rep. William Wilber and that room has access to the two outdoor little patio areas that surround it. So that area will be where we, uh, have our bar service. And then all of the adjacent rooms, the, the grand dining rooms, uh, the offices to the library will then be dispersed tables, which will be served off the back. The downstairs, which is actually relatively spectacular because when this mansion was built, they actually finished the, the, the down basement also. So you have some really cool, unique uh, brick structures and we've opened up the ceiling so that you can see all the beams. So we'll be able to then, uh, serve small functions in the basement area, which has just unbelievable character. And ideally, the outdoor area next to the, the kitchen will be the front area right now, if you look at the, the Masonic Temple itself, you'll see, uh, ballards that go across the front. So the entire front area that will be saved with those ballards and that will become an outdoor patio that will tie into the, the new construction that we're doing right behind it.
John, correct me if I'm wrong too. There, there's not, there's going to be a limited bar seating area. This is not going to even though you said it's a full-service bar that's going to support the various rooms, this is not going to, you're not going to see thirty seats at a bar.
So this, this is not a bar. This, this is a restaurant with a bar. Um, it will have the ability, you know, you'll have some seating, but because of the configuration of the, the mansion itself, we're anticipating that if, if we're lucky, we might be able to get approximately eight bar stools in the, uh, in the billers area. So you're very limited on what the seating is more about.
John, is, let me stop you there. Is it fair to say too, you're not, we don't expect to be open past midnight really on any night? Even though we operate most likely seven days a week, probably off on Mondays.
Far as the, yeah, the past midnight, um, unless we were having a private function, I can't imagine anything going past midnight.
Yeah, yeah, and probably even less during the week, yeah. And, uh, there's not go, even though it's going to be full service, um, I do not expect, um, a high percentage, um, to be takeout service, um, unless, you know, the crisis come back and it's only curbside, which is one hundred percent of what everybody's doing right now, but if it's, if we're in normal restaurant operations, um, uh, the, the takeout of alcohol would be quite limited. Is that fair?
Yeah. That's not the, that's not the primary focus. The primary focus is, is the dining and the food.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Noble. We did get your, um, artist renderings. There was three images that were sent that we have in front of us. What we don't have is a floor plan. Uh, typically when we have uh, liquor license transfer, we, we get to see the visual of, but uh, what that space would look like from an overhead view. Is that something that you have?
Actually, it's something I, if you give me a couple of seconds and, uh, if my daughter Casey can hear, see what you have for the, uh, uh, grab a, grab one of the kitchen, uh, PDFs that, that we've sent out, shows the, uh, kitchen and the new construction and then also look for the, uh, first floor of the mansion itself. Let, give me a, give me two seconds and I'll be able to hopefully pull that up for you.
John, correct me if I'm wrong. All we have though is the original, the original mansion footprint. That's what it is and that's not, that's not changing at all, but we don't have the final design of the addition.
Uh, not, no, absolutely not. We know the space. We know the footprint of, of the new addition. It's approximately forty-five hundred square feet. We know how it ties into the mansion. The, the seating has not been designed in the actual first floor at this point because we're not changing any walls and all of the seating will be totally dictated by what is going to be the new normal in dining. Because we're working within the confines of the actual mansion. So anything I would pull up would be, um, an architectural survey of, of the first floor of the mansion for you.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Noble. Um, if you can also talk a little bit more about what the management of the liquor would be as far as securing it, because it sends, essentially you are attached to a hotel and there will be people staying overnight there. So what is the separating factor, the security issue to keep overnight guests creeping out of their room at two in the morning and helping themselves to a cocktail?
So that, so the biller's room itself, where, where all of your alcohol and your bar would be is actually controlled by two doors. Because it's, it's similar to a house. What we're not is, what we're not is a wide open space with a bar off to the side. We're, we're literally a mansion and the one room will then have the ability to be totally locked up. We also have any, any alcohol, um, your, your beers and your wines will be in a locked wine cellar and keg area with cooler down in the basement. So all of the alcohol will be in areas that are, that are locked. So if you're a hotel guest, uh, the restaurant is closed for the evening, the whole bar area will be, doors will be closed and locked.
Understood. And you did talk about that, that midnight cutoff time potentially, uh, operating hours for the bar and restaurant. Would those hours potentially be expanded for overnight guests who would want room service or takeout later?
The, the focus of our overnight guests are, are primarily for people who are coming in towns. There, there are functions that are sponsored by or solely for a group of guests. Um, so we will not be really doing a, um, an à la carte type room service scenario. You'll be coming in, you'll be staying with us and it will be more of a, a defined event type hotel. Where you're, you're literally coming in and you as a group or you as a, as a function, because what we really plan on doing is expanding, uh, the food offerings in the valley. So you'll come in for a, a cook-off for the weekend. So everything will be a little bit more organized and controlled than you would have in a typical hotel.
Understood. Thank you. At this point, I'll open it up to other members of council to see if they have any questions or comments, either from Mr. Zeller or for the Nobles. Yes, Mr. Callahan? Mr. Callahan?
Thank you. Um, thank you. Can, can you hear me?
Yep, I got you.
Good. Um, fir- first of all, I want to thank you for investing in a city. And it's a, it's a, not the greatest time to be opening up a business right now, so I give you a lot of credit for moving and, um, um, I don't have a layout, uh, of the plan. I, I don't know if I didn't, if I lost it or whatever, but, um, technology. Uh, anyways, um, what, what's happening with the Masonic Temple next door to it?
The Masonic Temple is coming down. That actually, from, from lack of maintenance, has some major structural issues with, with the steel and water damage and mold. So the tan brick part of everything you see from Wine Dot Street will be coming down.
Can I, can I jump in just for a second? If, if there is a floor plan that you're able to share with us on the spot, what we're able to do is add a box in our go-to meeting where everyone on this meeting would be able to see it. So if you are able to send that over to our city clerk, Robert Vedoni?
Okay, Casey, do you have that? Did you find? My, my daughter's on with us right now.
Yes, we see her.
Yeah, she's got access. Can you see if you can find the floor plan of the, the mansion and also, uh,
Yep, we have the first floor plan. Uh, um, who should I send it to?
Robert Vedoni, our city clerk. I'm not sure if you've communicated with him yet. I'm on the, uh, so any, you may have an email address for city clerks.
Casey and John, so, so.
Ms, Mr. Callahan, if we can just get this email out first, uh, if we can get the email sent and then we'll, we'll see if we can pull it up before we continue our questioning, referencing the, uh, floor plan specifically. That's, uh, R V I D O N I at Bethlehem-dash-P A dot gov. And Casey, if you're able to get that sent over to, uh, Robert Vedoni, the city clerk, he will forward it and we'll be able to pull it up here and add a box in our go-to meeting chat so we can reference that specific, that specific image. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Callahan.
So anyways, so the Masonic Temple is going to come down. The, um, the, what's going up on the second, uh, floor of the Wilbur Mansion? Uh, the first floor is going to be the restaurant, right?
Uh, first floor is going to be the restaurant and you know what? I've got a great schematic for you. It'll show you everything, um. But what will happen on the top two floors of the mansion, they were originally bedrooms. So what we're doing is we're taking and restoring the original bedrooms in the upper floors of the mansion. So there'll be two floors of hotel rooms for a total of nine, nine hotel rooms. I'm going to be, let me just.
And then, and then what is going to replace the Masonic Temple?
That's a one-story addition. It'll be about a forty-five hundred square foot addition.
That'll be the commercial kitchen and the unplanned.
Yeah, so what I'm sending you right now is, I just sent to my daughter. Casey, can you please forward the email that I just sent you with the, uh, the PDF involved? I apologize not having this to you sooner. Casey, were you, you able to send the one that I just sent you? Okay, what, what we, what we're sending you and this is, it's, it's not fixed. It just shows the, the basically the outer area and, and how the first floor, kitchen, uh, new bathrooms and the event flexible space is sized. So you, you can really get a good scale of things. And once you guys get this, I can walk you through the entire, uh, floor plan.
Mr. Noble, that, uh, that image has been forwarded to us, um, on our cell phones. So we have it in front of us here. If you can help orient us to make sure that we're looking at this image in the correct um, direction as far as what is the easiest way. I, I think
Okay.
knowing the building, that, that rounded area would be facing east, which is facing towards Wine Dot. And then, and then on the right side of that image would be the large rectangle, which is currently the, the hall of the Masonic Temple. Is that correct?
Yes.
Understood.
Yep, the, so the entire temple comes down and where you see, um, the stairs, there's a, the patio, the ballards that are concrete ballards that are there are going to remain. And so where you see that, that dense area of tables is where we don't know exactly how the world's going to be, but that was, uh, when this, when this drawing was originally looked at to see where we could be, uh, that was where event space is. And it will still be functional space. We just don't know how dense.
And will that event space have alcohol, I would imagine?
Yes, it will be.
And that will, will that be serviced directly through that bar or will that be an outside vendor?
So it'll, it'll be part of our, our bar. So what we'll end up probably doing is, is we'll, we'll have a controlled alcohol space in the kitchen area. It will service that area.
And will there, if there's an event, I imagine there'd also be a bartender serving.
Yes, yeah. It's, we're, we're looking at a fully controlled. You, you, this is not a rental space. Everything you do will be through the hotel, through the restaurant and we will be controlling all the alcohol, the service, all the food. So it's, it's literally a full service and we will be in control of, of the entire event.
So no one would be able to rent the space and bring in an outside vendor for food or be able to bring in a keg of beer and serve themselves?
No, absolutely not.
Understood. Any other questions, Mr. Callahan, before I turn it over?
I do. So, so anyways, I just wanted, again, I just want to thank you for investing in the city. Uh, I, I actually was in the Wilbur Mansion probably, um, nineteen ninety-three, I think it was, and, and it's beautiful in there. Um, I actually got married in the, in the, in the Masonic Temple right in there. And that was, uh, they had some really beautiful arched windows in there that were just stunning with a beautiful floor in there. So I mean, it's kind of sad to see it come down, but I totally understand. I wish you luck with everything. If there's anything I can help you out with in the future, please let me know. And again, um, you know, I really appreciate you, um, uh, investing in the city of Bethlehem. So, and I wish you luck with everything.
Nah, it's, I appreciate it very much and, and I've been here for, you know, over forty years now, driving by this, this piece of real estate, always thinking there's got to be something really, really cool you can do with it. And we finally found it.
Well, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, another email has just been sent out by Mr. Bedoni to council, which has a slightly more detailed, uh, floor plan as far as how those walls would separate. And it is a high definition one that would be able to be zoomed in as well. Um, so we do have reference to specifics as far as that floor plan, where the doors are allocated, um, even as detailed as the layout of the circular tables within the within the event space. Um, any other comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Callahan, go ahead.
How how many people will the event, how many people will the event area hold?
So the, you know, when we originally got approvals for this thing, we were anticipating somewhere in the two hundred range. But the reality of of today and and with the focus slightly more, actually significantly more on the kitchen part, you're looking at a at a a plan that was designed to not necessarily be focused on food. So the commercial kitchen part of this plan is actually being increased by by almost fifty percent, which will eat into that event space. We're anticipating events to max out at maybe a hundred twenty-five people.
Anything else, Mr. Callahan?
That's it. I I I have a copy of the floor plan here in front of me. It looks good. I appreciate all the answers.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of council regarding the public hearing for the liquor license transfer? Seeing none. The proposed transfer approval resolution is on the agenda this evening as item ten H. The public hearing is adjourned. And, uh, Mr. Noble, if you want to hang up the phone line and then you can just monitor along on the go to meeting. So when this comes up for a vote later this evening, if we have any other questions, you'd be available.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to call public comment?
That's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Um, I I will end the call with you again, Mr. Noble, uh, and then open up the line, uh, for that. If anyone has public comment on public hearing number two, which is the liquor license transfer, and that number is six one zero nine nine seven seven nine six three. Never have too many attorneys here. Mr. Spurk, you see that?
You're doing, I appreciate the job, uh, all your folks are doing. It's very difficult under the circumstances. So, um, appreciate it.
I thank you. Seeing no comments on the public hearing number two, uh, the public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda this evening, seeking approval for the minutes for May nineteenth, twenty twenty. Any comments from members of council? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. We'll now move on to public comment on any subject not being voted on this evening. We have a few names signed up already, so I will call those folks, starting with Mr. Caratola, Ms. Diamond, and Mr. Doobian, and then open it up to other who would like to make comment. And that number they are able to be calling after we work through the names of folks who have previously signed up is six one zero nine nine seven seven nine six three. So I'll be calling Mr. Caratola.
Start recording it.
That was great. Um, moving on to, uh, our next previously signed up speaker, Ms. Diamond.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. Diamond. It's Bethlehem City Council calling.
Hello. Yes, I hear you.
Great.
You hear me all right?
Yes, we can. If you could just give your name and address for the record and then proceed to give your comments. Thank you.
Uh, this is, this is Barbara Diamond, uh, four twenty-five Center Street. I think I should turn off the.
Yeah, if you can mute your YouTube feed, uh, or just turn the volume down, that would be helpful for any feedback.
Okay. Uh, so this evening, um, I'm giving the Bethlehem moment. And before I do, I'd like to thank you all for all you're doing during these very difficult times. Uh, so my, uh, the Bethlehem moment this evening is about Dr. William Estes. Dr. William L. Estes is a figure of immense importance in Bethlehem's history. In eighteen eighty-one, when he was just twenty-six years old, Dr. Estes was recruited from Mount Sinai Hospital in New York City to be St. Luke's first superintendent, director, and chief surgeon. There could not have been a better choice to leave the fledgling hospital. Over the course of the next thirty-nine years until his retirement in nineteen twenty, Dr. Estes' forward-thinking leadership and scientific approach to medicine not only saved countless lives, but established St. Luke's as a hospital on the forefront of medical care. Dr. Estes' training at Mount Sinai was profoundly important to the people of Bethlehem. In the eighteen eighties and nineties, there was still no general agreement about the causal role of bacteria in wound infection in the U.S. and England. Modern methods of controlling infection were controversial and not typically practiced. The famous eighteen eighty-five painting by Thomas Ekins, The Gross Clinic, depicts renowned surgeon Samuel Gross surrounded by assistants, hovering over a patient in their street clothes without masks and the patient wearing socks. This was not the case at Mount Sinai, which was heavily influenced by German medical care at the time. Specifically, Lister's ideas of countering infections such as soaking surgical sponges, spraying wounds with antiseptic solution, washing surgical instruments, and wearing appropriate surgical gowns. As an early confirmed practitioner of Listerism, Dr. Estes established an advanced standard of care at St. Luke's when he began in the early eighteen eighties. Among Dr. Estes' most significant innovations was the founding of St. Luke's School of Nursing. Training women to service nurses was controversial at the time, but Dr. Estes' training in New York exposed him to the fledgling movement founded by Florence Nightingale and convinced him that appropriately trained women could be a vital adjunct to patient care. Not long after coming to St. Luke's, he began to lay the groundwork for a nurse training program modeled on the Nightingale Plan. The school was established in eighteen eighty-four, making it among the earliest schools in the country. Today's St. Luke's School of Nursing is the nation's oldest nursing school in continuous operation. The desire by civic leaders for a hospital in Bethlehem grew out of its developing industrialization. Industrial accidents were increasing, and the closest hospital was fifty miles away in Philadelphia. Medical care along the railroad railroad lines was poor. Coupling and uncoupling railroad cars by hand was dangerous, and injuries were frequent. Within a year of arriving at St. Luke's, Dr. Estes was named chief surgeon of the Lehigh Valley Railroad, and he set about organizing and training the medical men that served the railroad. One of his earliest innovations, which became a national standard, was the creation of a uniform first aid kit to be carried on locomotives and caboosees of every freight train and mandatory training in first aid at St. Luke's for all conductors, engineers, station agents, and clerks. Dr. Estes' experience treating injuries led to a subsequent innovation that revolutionized the treatment of compound fractures with the plate and peg method of splinting. His scientific approach to the study of treatment methods as a leader of a study for the American College of Surgeons led to the permanent establishment of the Committee on Trauma. As a result, the standard of fracture care in hospitals in the U.S. and Canada improved immensely. Dr. Estes was a remarkable man, an exceptional administrator and medical visionary whose leadership greatly benefited the people of Bethlehem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Diamond. Have a good evening. Moving on to our next previously signed up speaker, Alex Dobyan.
Hello. Please state your name after the tone and Google Voice will try to connect you.
Bethlehem City Council? Hello, this is Adam Waldron.
Hi, this is Alex Dobyan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I'm not sure. We, there was a little feedback at the beginning of the call. I'm not sure if your YouTube stream is able, was on or is able to be turned down. We're having a little feedback.
Okay, I've just muted it. So, um.
We can hear you loud and clear. If you're able to give your name and address for the record and then proceed to give your comments to Bethlehem City Council?
Sure. Um, Alex Dobyan, that's D O B Y A N. Uh, address is thirteen twenty-two Valley Road.
Thank you, Mr. Dobyan. Please, uh, proceed with your comments.
Great. Um, so first I will want to, uh, thank the city council, uh, for offering the opportunity for public comment tonight. Um, I wanted to speak out, uh, in regards to the recent protests, uh, that were held in Bethlehem in support of the Black Lives Matter movement. Uh, and I wanted to, uh, continue to, uh, engage, um, at the local level to see what we can do, um, in this issue. Um, I think the community has spoken loud and clear, um, in favor of ending systemic racism and reducing disparities um, in policing, uh, across communities of color. Um, so I wanted to, uh, speak out, um, in favor of certain policies that I believe the Bethlehem Police Department could take um, in support of, um, these endeavors. Um, we may not think that, uh, this is a problem that affects us now, but I think, you know, from what we've seen at the national level, um, with the recent tragic killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis, that, um, these events can cause a lot of pain. It's better if they don't happen. We don't want to see them happen in our community. Um, and so I therefore want to, um, propose some things that we could be doing as a community, um, to reduce the likelihood of something like this happening. Um, I want to first state that, um, I'm not currently aware, uh, of what the department policies are. I filed a request with the city records department, um, in regards to the city police department's, uh, use of force policy. Um, I haven't received a response yet, but it's still within the window. So, um, I hope that some of these policies are also are already in place, um, and that we don't have that much to talk about. Um, but if not, I would encourage, uh, the police department and the police chief, I'm not sure if he's still present, to give these a long look, um, because it would be very beneficial for our community. Um, these are all things that have been adopted in other states and municipalities across the country. Um, I'm just going to list some of them. Um, so that, um, you can have, uh, a view into what I'm proposing. Um, first, um, in Tennessee, police officers are required to legally exhaust, um, all options before shooting. Um, in New Orleans, officers are required to issue a warning before using deadly force whenever possible. In Colorado, chokeholds and neck restraints are criminalized. In Wichita, officers are required to report anytime they threaten civilians with a weapon. In Connecticut, um, officers who are investigated for using excessive force are not allowed to be hired by police departments. All of these things would be things that the police department could do in Bethlehem to make sure that, um, our police officers are, um, you know, using the least amount of force possible to safely resolve the situation, um, without using violence. Uh, the great thing about this is that this isn't something that is anti-police. It's pro-police, it's pro-citizen, it's pro-safety. And the reason why is because police departments that have these policies, uh, see that police officers are less likely to be assaulted and that they're less likely to be killed in the line of duty, according to the Use of Force Project. So I think that any of these policies would just be a win-win, um, for the police who are, you know, able to reduce the amount of harm that they're putting themselves in. And you'd be able to, um, make sure that these kinds of, um, tragic events, um, don't happen within our communities. Uh, I want to emphasize also that because, um, violent policing disproportionately affects communities of color, specifically African Americans, um, these are proposals that we could do to reduce the amount of racism that's in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobyan. Appreciate your comments. Have a good evening. We'll now open up to anyone else who would like to make comment who have not previously signed up. The number to contact Bethlehem City Council is six one zero nine nine seven seven nine six three. We will accept comment on any subject not being voted on this evening, as well as roll it into any subject that is on our agenda this evening, meaning any resolution or ordinance. Anyone like to make comment to Bethlehem City Council? This will be your final opportunity to do so at the number six one zero nine nine seven seven nine six three. Seeing no further comments, we will move along with our agenda this evening. Any old business from members of council? Communications, communication six A.
A memorandum from Edward Boscola, Director of Water and Sewer Resources, recommending a contract with ACOM Technical Services, Inc. for work related to wastewater treatment plant process upgrade evaluation and preliminary design effort, Act five thirty-seven Sewage Facilities Planning. The term of the contract runs through December thirty-first, twenty twenty. The cost is one hundred fifty thousand dollars. The maximum dollar value of any renewals is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but there are none currently planned.
Resolution ten A is on the agenda. Communication six B.
A memorandum from Sandra Steidel, Director of Purchasing, requesting council to consider a resolution for the destruction of records from the Purchasing Bureau listed in the attached exhibit. The directors reviewed the Municipal Records Retention Act, and the records fall within categories where destruction is permitted.
The resolution can be placed on the June sixteenth agenda. Communication six C.
A memorandum from Eric Evans, Business Administrator, with an attached proposed lease agreement between the City of Bethlehem as lessor and Art of Flight, Inc. as less C for golf training, playing, and practicing facility at the Lower Cart Barn at the city's municipal golf course. Also attached is a proposed authorizing resolution.
Resolution ten C is on the agenda. Communication six D.
A memorandum from Alicia Carner, Director of Community and Economic Development, with an attached proposed resolution authorizing a substantial amendment to the city's twenty nineteen C D B G action plan. The department is recommending a substantial amendment to the action plan to incorporate CARES Act funding for disaster relief efforts resulting from the COVID-nineteenth pandemic. CARES Act funding is a new allocation of funding.
Resolution ten D is on the agenda. Communication sixty. Or pardon me, six F. Resolution ten E is on the agenda. Communication six F. Thank you.
A memorandum from City Solicitor William P. Leeson with an attached resolution and associated use permit agreement. The permittee is Mount Airy Neighborhood Association, and the subpermittee is vaguely Enterprises, Inc. The event is the West Side Farmer's Market. The location is the Bethlehem Rose Garden, and the agreement covers the twenty twenty time period specified in the authorizing resolution.
Resolution ten F is on the agenda. Communication six G.
A memorandum from City Solicitor William P. Leeson with an attached resolution and a.
associated use permit agreement. The permittee is Saint Luke's University Health Network, and the event is the Impact Through Infusion Initiative. The duration is specified in the authorizing resolution, and the locations are the Earl C. Schaefer Ice Rink and the Ilux Mill Tennis Courts.
Resolution ten G is on the agenda. Reports? I have no reports this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items here. First, I really want to thank Chief Deluzio and Chief Mike Sull and Chief Nivodnik for all the time and effort we worked on Saturday for the very large crowd. Probably spent two to two and a half hours planning it. In the morning, everything worked very well. Hopefully, we'll continue to have that success for future events at Playwood Plaza. And the chief is here. If members of council have any questions for him, he'll be more than happy to answer. And Ms. Carner's here too to go over the business plan, business opening plan on Friday if members of council have any questions. As of yes, as of this morning, the City of Bethlehem had COVID-nineteen, nine hundred and fifty-three positives throughout the city and forty-six deaths. I think members of council did receive a memorandum from me last week. We did open a compost center, so it's open for drop-offs and pickup of compost and mulch. We are in the process of reviewing the opening of the recycling center. It's possible that might happen within the next two weeks. We are looking at that. All board meetings, planning, zoning, et cetera, will take place during the month of June, go-to meetings. So we're back to the board meeting, but we'll be go-to meetings. We are in the process of evaluating. We did announce that all parks would be closed along with the pools, but we are evaluating the possible opening down the line of some playgrounds. So that's in the process of being discussed eternally. And I would like the clerk, if I may, and I will provide him that, I think you do have a copy of it, my comments to council about the Minneapolis incident entered into the record as part of my, my report. And so if members of council would like the chief or Ms. Carner to give a brief summary of the opening for business on Friday and what we're doing, what we planned last Saturday, the chief and Ms. Carner are more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, there is quite a lot going on within our city, our state, our country, and the world right now. If we thought things could be less unsure with the pandemic, clearly, this past week has shown us that there is quite a lot of inequity in this world, and it is affecting everyone in a large way. I would be interested to hear the perspective of the chief, if you're, if you'd like, if you have any comments that you'd like to give and maybe start a dialogue. If there's anyone else on council who would like to make comment generally or have a question for the chief regarding the current climate that's happening within our, our state and country right now on that topic. And then obviously, we would like to talk about the reopening of our downtowns as well with Ms. Carner.
I could just make one quick comment. We've received word that there'll be a, an event at Playwood Plaza tomorrow, three P.M., Black Lives Matter. And I want to thank Councilwoman Grace Ramsey-Smith for providing me the contact phone numbers for the two co-organizers. I felt it was important as mayor to reach out to them, and I did this morning. And I offered to meet with them and start a dialogue, and they did call me back, and we met this afternoon for almost ninety minutes. We had a very good discussion. The chiefs were with me. They had no problem that, I asked them if they were okay with the chief attending. They said yes. And I really want to thank Maddie Fall and Michael Herenc, Herencraz, two very well-educated and very eloquent individuals. We had a very productive, very positive meeting. In fact, how the meeting ended is we intend to continue our dialogue with additional meetings in the future. So I was very pleased with the reach out and very appreciative and very appreciative that they did return the call and the fact that we established a very positive dialogue and was very good discussion and looking forward to future meetings. So let me just make that part of the record too. And chief?
Good evening again. Tomorrow, we have a event here at City Hall from three to five in the afternoon. We also have one planned on Saturday, and we're looking at one on Sunday at three o'clock, all related to the Minneapolis incident. We are in contact with the organizers like we do with every other protest in the city. We handle them yearly. The one, the event on Saturday was run very good. We had a great turnout, and the people voiced their concerns, and we're able to get their message out there without resorting to any type of physical violence or anything else like that has marred other protests across the country. If you look on our Facebook page today, there's comments from me on George Floyd's death and the policing in America. And I'd like to read this into the record here on council on behalf of the Bethlehem Police Department. "Last Tuesday, when the video of George Floyd's death was aired, I was horrified at what I saw. Like all Americans across the country, I was outraged at the callous actions of the police officer kneeling on Mr. Floyd's neck. I was also shocked at the actions of the other three officers who stood idly by and did not attempt to intervene even though it was their duty to do so. Since last week, many police officers across this country have watched the video of George Floyd's death. We as police officers condemn what happened to Mr. Floyd. I have not met one police officer, either Bethlehem or any other agency, who viewed this video and justified the actions of ex-officer Derek Chauvin. I have heard from officers comments of disgust. This is not what we stand for, and this is plain wrong. Every police officer I've spoken with has said that the ex-officer should have been fired and arrested for what he did, and that the other officers should have been fired. Many officers indicated that the other three should be investigated and charged accordingly, and to update you today, they were charged with a degree of homicide. They failed to stop what was taking place, just like citizens or police officers are rightfully outraged at what happened and also at what is happening across this country with the violence rioting and looting by certain radical criminal groups using this incident to further their agenda of violence destruction and hate. On Saturday in Bethlehem, a rally and march was held to protest George Floyd's murder, to condemn racism and to ask for justice. My deputy chief and I were present. BPD officers were present to assist the large protest march from the Rose Garden to Broad, down to New Street, to City Hall, to Church Street, and back. The march was peaceful. The protesters' message about what happened in Minneapolis, the injustice that took place, was loudly heard. And like other cities across our nation, our protest was peaceful, not marred by violence, looting, or rioting. Over the weekends, as I watched media and social media accounts of what was transpiring, I saw a photo of a young black woman holding a large sign that read, 'Not all blacks are criminals, not all whites are racist, not all cops are bad, ignorant comes in all colors.' After reading the sign, I said to myself, that's so very true. Human beings are an imperfect species. We are all different in some ways, but we're all the same in other ways. There is good and bad in all groups of people. We should not group people into certain broad categories. To do so is plain wrong. Police officers are no different. What occurred in Minneapolis was one hundred percent wrong. What the four officers did was wrong. What off, what ex-officer Derek Chauvin did was criminal. The horrific events of that day that led to Mr. Floyd's death should be investigated thoroughly, and if additional charges are needed, they should be filed accordingly. This was filed yesterday, and today they were filed. The type of force used by ex-officer Chauvin is never an acceptable use of force by any properly trained officer. In my forty years of law enforcement experience and training, I have never had anyone ever advocate this type of use of force. I know many officers, and from talking with them, they too, from their experience and training, agree that a properly trained officer would never use this type of force under those circumstances. Police departments across the country this weekend joined with the protesters from L.A., Flint, Michigan, Orlando, Miami, and other places. Police departments engaged, they even marched with protesters to stay together to happen. What happened to Mr. Floyd was wrong and criminal. We're currently at a series of crossroads in our country. We can peacefully protest for change to stop the violence, work together in our communities like many police departments are, or we can riot, loot, create anarchy, and create more pain and suffering for many innocent people. About two hundred years ago, Edwin Burke stated, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing," to quote so very true today. All police are not the same. All people are not the same. All protesters are not the same. We have to come together under one common belief that what transpired in Minneapolis that resulted in the death of George Floyd was one hundred percent wrong. We also must state together that the violence, the looting, the rioting by some groups and individuals is also wrong and has no place in a civilized society. Only when we work together towards common ideas, communicate peacefully, and work out differences without violence can we achieve overall mutual change. And in that change, do justice for Mr. George Floyd and his family." And that's the comments of the Bethlehem Police Department. If you want to read it, it's on our Facebook page.
Thank you, Chief Deluzio. Obviously, when we have such a large event like we did last Saturday, and what you've seen in many other cities where things have turned violent, it's, it's a great indication of the folks that we have in our community as well as the restraint and the respect the police department showed when there wasn't a single incident that happened within that large rally last Saturday. The birth that the police department gave the marchers to allow them space to speak and be heard, I think, is a testament to the planning and the thoughtfulness that went into that event. And I would encourage you and the department to continue that practice where you've seen other police departments in the country escalating the tensions that are there and forcing standoffs and physical altercations that are not necessary. I, I think that the police department in Bethlehem did a great job in helping to be part of supporting the First Amendment rights that everyone is granted. So I would, I hope that that practice can, can be encouraged in future events tomorrow and through the weekend as well.
That's what we're aiming for.
Great. Are there any other comments or questions directed towards the chief or generally on this topic before we, we move along? Dr. Van Wer, and then Mr. Ramsey Smith and Mr. Reynolds in that order, please.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. I agree with everything that President Waldron said about the commendable bonds that the police formed in a difficult situation, and that's all very accurate, but I'm going to raise the bar a little bit. You said in the paper, the one thing, let me make sure I'm starting it right here. Thank you for addressing recent civil unrest nationally and locally. However, what I explicitly did not hear from Chief Deluzio is an acknowledgement of systemic racism at the heart of the Minneapolis police officer Chauvin's murder of George Floyd. That racism was the reason for this event and many other similar events, not just a lack of training. That racism played a role in the other three officers looking away. Mayor, you're a good man. Chief Deluzio, you're a good man. If the only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing, then I ask you to do something, to look at our own city and address systemic, economic, and social racism where it exists. Chief, you said in the paper that the one thing that he could have done, referring to Officer Chauvin, is to take his knee off of him. My question to you is, why did he not? It was not a lack of training here, clearly. It was because of institutionalized racism in the police department. I too am glad that the Bethlehem Police Department modeled a calm attitude and ensured protesters could have their say, but that is simply not enough. I'm going to read a letter published locally from a Lehigh professor which encapsulates my concern over both the mayor's letter and the chief's response. And while this letter may paint a broad stroke for police officers, I think implicitly it doesn't mean every police officer, and explicitly, I certainly don't mean every police officer. "With all due respect to Mayor Donches, I do not share your enthusiasm for his powerful statement. Powerful words are easy to come by this week as many leaders are speaking out about racial justice and police violence. The mayor did not use these particular words, which reflect that the relevant problem is bigger than just some cops behaving badly. But even so, the words the mayor did use are not that meaningful unless they get turned into action that goes beyond condemning a single instance of police violence. So my question for the mayor is, what does it mean for a mayor and the people he oversees to not, quote, 'turn our backs on racism,' or to not, quote, 'accept innocent lives being taken from us,' or to not, quote, 'think that you can't be part of the solution and the change needed for this to stop?' Surely, it must mean more than merely saying, 'We should not do these things.' I believe the mayor can do a bit more. For example, the mayor can start by admitting that the problem is not out there in some universe other than Bethlehem. Just earlier this year, we had an incidence of racial bias in policing, which was raised by two local judges who went public with the information after receiving no response from the chief of police. In his response, the mayor demonstrated that he neither understood nor had an interest in doing something about the problem. I recall his statement at city council, which asserted he had investigated the issue and found no problematic behavior, so he would not be commenting on it further. Case closed. Does the mayor really think that there are no problems with how our police department is dealing with people of color? What is he doing to stop the double standard that allows Lehigh University students to benefit from the local marijuana ordinance while his police department pretends the ordinance does not exist for others who are found with marijuana? What is he doing to make sure that the police department is not operating and acting on the assumption that black and brown people are likely to be criminals? Is he aware of obvious racial bias in the way that city police officers respond to and interact with people of color whom they suspect are breaking the law? The Bethlehem police may not be killing people, but that doesn't mean that they treat black and brown people the same way they treat white people. Racism that is not overt and does not result in a person's death is still racism. The mayor and police chief can pretend it doesn't exist locally and condemn what happened to George Floyd for the brutal inhumanity it displayed, but if that's all they do, then they are part of the problem. Leadership requires hearing what people are saying about double standards and unequal treatment that operate through our own political institutions at the local level to undermine the experience, well-being, and security of people of color. Once this is understood, leadership then involves doing something about it. If the mayor and police chief can't see the structural nature of the problem and its pervasiveness right here at home, then they are the wrong leaders for this time. Now, I know this doesn't leave us with a great Bethlehem moment feeling, but if you can't speak the truth for what it is, I don't know what the use is in saying anything. We are very used to handing out attaboys up here, but the quality of good leadership is how they respond to the pointed criticism of it. And I do fully place this burden on your shoulders, chief and mayor, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Van Wer. Ms. Ramsey Smith?
I have a couple of questions for Chief Deluzio. The first question is body cams. I know we had a movement to get body cams for all officers. At this point, does every officer have a body cam when they are on duty?
Every uniform officer has a body cam. And those incidents that Councilwoman Ben Wer talked about, they're all on body cams.
Okay. My second question is regarding, and again, you know, we really can't legislate compassion and inclusiveness, but I'm wondering about trainings that officers receive as far as, you know, de-escalation, cultural competence, and diversity. Do our officers receive those kind of trainings initially and then on an ongoing basis?
Yes, they do. Many of the things the one citizen called up about, we already have. They've been in place for years. We're a duly accredited law enforcement agency at the national level and at the state level. We're a duly accredited law enforcement agency at the national level and at the state level. 4% of agencies in the United States out of all law enforcement agencies are dual accredited. That means you have to... Your standards are high. They're the best standards out there. Many of the things people are writing to me and what citizens are asking for, they're in our rules and regulations. They're approved by the Department of Justice, which oversees discreditation. Also with the state, they all focus under federal law and state law. We're doing many of these things already, plus others. We do de-escalation. We do crisis intervention. We have a strict use of force policy. I mean, all these things that are being talked about, we're in front of it on it already, and we've been in front of it over the last 10 to 15 years. We learned by mistakes over the years.
How often do the staff, the policemen and women receive, you know, the training? Is it like yearly or...?
It's yearly, and they have to qualify yearly, and they have to retake the... They do TASER, dequalification, defensive tactics, de-escalation training, crisis intervention training. You just don't give them a uniform and a gun, and we throw them out there anymore. The academy, you go to the academy for half a year now. When you get out, you still have to continue training, just like many other occupations. The law changes every year. Techniques change every year, and the officers have to get recertified on the things. We have a training division. That's all they do, is constantly train and recertify people.
And does that training person, I'm thinking, do they... I'm thinking now, if they have it in the past, it might be good... It would be good moving forward, certainly, for them to connect with different organizations that support people of color, that they could maybe be consultants or helping them as far as giving ideas for training.
We do that already.
Because it's an evolving issue as far as cultural competence goes and diversity.
We do. We have courses with the LGBTQ that are endorsed by their community, by NAACP. We take courses that are endorsed by them, Hispanic community, Hispanic courses. I have black officers, Hispanic officers, an Asian officer. I mean, we're a diverse department, and every year we keep getting more diverse. The training is continuous in police work. If you don't train, you're behind the eight ball, and that's what's important.
And I understand that. I just want to make sure that we're getting the proper training.
We started de-escalation training years ago. I mean, going back five, six years before it became a common word. We were in front of that, actually, in Bethlehem with it.
Well, as President Waldron said, this has been an extremely difficult week, more so for some than others, but I just want to speak from the heart because I feel like I want to say something, and I'm not really sure what to say, but I've been thinking a lot about it, and I think that, you know, at every council meeting, every morning during in the beginning of school, and in almost every public meeting, we cite the Pledge of Allegiance, and within it are these words, "Liberty and justice for all." And I really take that part and think about it every time I say it, and I think, is there really justice for all? And obviously, the answer is no. There hasn't been for even the past 100 years since this pledge was written in 1892 and for many hundreds of years before that. They say anger is a bodyguard of hurt. Anger is a bodyguard of hurt. While I never condone violence, it's really important for us to reconcile with the fact that people of color are deeply and profoundly hurt, and that hurt is manifesting itself as anger. Can we blame them? Absolutely not. I would not be in this position today as a council member were it not for my dear friends of color. I am blessed every day to see the gifts, talents, and dignity of my wonderful students of color. My heart is broken for them and for our country. As a mother, you live with many fears regarding your children's well-being. I thank God that my 20-year-old son is white, for his safety is greater than that of his friends of color, and that is truly wrong. My heart breaks for the parents of children of color, for I cannot fathom the fear they live with each and every day. Their fears are above and beyond what any parent's fears ever should be. Our path to justice for all, and especially for people of color, has been diverted, especially in the past three and a half years. We must continue on this path bolder, stronger, and even more determined. The time has well passed for justice for all. We must open our ears, eyes, heart, and soul to our brothers and sisters of color. We must work together as a city to assure that all our community members and visitors of color feel safe, secure, equal, and loved. We must assure that we are not just against racism, but we are anti-racist, we are inclusive, and we always strive to ensure justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey Smith. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add a couple of thoughts here. First of all, I do want to thank the chief for making sure that the rally last week on Saturday was peaceful, and I also want to thank the mayor for reaching out to the organizers, as well as his comments. I do share the feelings of my colleagues, though, when I think that that, it's really only the beginning of the conversation here. I think that the fact that everybody in this country just about agrees that what happened to George Floyd was horrific, it was a tragedy, it was an injustice unlike we have seen on camera in a long, long time. But there's also a difference between not doing something wrong and doing what's right. And I think that that's part of the conversation that we need to have in this city. And to piggyback on what other people have said is like, we need to start with the understanding that we don't have the same experience in this country based on our skin color. We don't. And I think that as the government, we need to be creating institutions that are equitable and fair. You know, Ms. Ramsey Smith just gave the line, and Dr. Roy said that recently, "It's not just enough to be against racism, but we need to proactively be anti-racist." 150 years ago, you could be an ally of African Americans by being against slavery. 100 years ago, you could say Jim Crow laws were wrong. 60 years ago, you could say desegregation was wrong. Today, it takes more than that. It's conversations about where highways are built and how you draw zoning codes and, you know, how you, you know, make sure that you can't make a house on a lot smaller than a certain amount so you can include affordable housing. And, you know, those are the conversations. We're not to blame for those things, but it is our responsibility to fix those things. Look at the history of Bethlehem alone. Look at our African-American population compared to Allentown or Easton. A lot of that has to do with the fact that Bethlehem Steel didn't want to hire African-Americans for a long time. So we have, what's our population of African-Americans according to the census? 6, 7, 8%? So what has that done? That's created generations of African-American families in this city that have inherited that discrimination and have faced those challenges. Look at what happened to, look at what's happened to our Hispanic community as people have moved to this city. It's not, once again, we are not to blame for those things, but it is our responsibility to understand that a lot of the anger we're seeing in this country over the last several days is not just about what happened in Minnesota. It's about the discrimination, the anger, the frustration that has crossed over generations that we have inherited as elected officials. And one of our jobs here is to understand that as our country's identity changes, our city's identity is changing as well. And we need to do everything we can to make our institutions and build the trust, because and a lot of us are teachers, and I guarantee you, Mr. Callahan and Ms. Ramsey Smith could tell you the same thing, is that like, when students walk into our classroom, and a lot of times, they're angry at us, or they're angry, or they're pissed off with the world, they're not actually angry at us. It has been traumatic experience after traumatic experience that has led to damage to hurt trust in the people that are standing in front of them. And as a teacher, it took me years to understand that, that when a kid was angry, he wasn't angry at me. And it's not, it's not our police department's fault, it's not our fault that this has happened, but it needs to be a wake-up call to us, and we need to be inspired going forward that it's not just enough to say what happened in Minnesota is wrong. It's not even just enough to say that we can have peaceful demonstrations here. It's going to be enough when people that are in marginalized communities are able to look at us as our elected officials and look at things that we've done and say, "You know what? They made things better. They made things more inclusive. They gave power to people that didn't have power before." Because as I said before, it is more difficult sometimes to point out some of these, you know, biases and the existence of racism than it might have been, you know, 50 or 100 years ago. It's a challenge for us to do that, but that is our job. And I would agree with Ms. Ramsey Smith when she said, you know, she wouldn't be up here if she didn't feel strongly about these issues. And, you know, I think that we need to make more of an effort as a community, as individuals, and, you know, this does not all fall on our police department. It falls on every public institution, every governmental institution, to make sure that we understand both the history, the pain, the anger, the frustration, and we need to be committed to creating better, fairer institutions that are equitable and our citizens could look at and say that they believe them. And, you know, that's the challenge for all of us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for your comments. Anyone else on council like to make comment? Mr. Callahan? Mr. Callahan, go ahead.
You know, I just want to echo everybody's statements. You know, it's, 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 you know, it really touched, I think, everybody, what happened in the tragedy last week and on the weekend, I heard, I didn't know about the parade that was going on, but I heard, I heard all the noise up there, and I walked. I was so proud. I posted the video that I saw on Facebook, and I was so proud of how they're behaving themselves and just peacefully protesting. And in, like, a lot of people come... Our police department did a heck of a job, and I want to say thank you to them too for, you know, in such short notice, run the, you know, down the roads up ahead and, you know, allow everybody to, you know, speak up, because it's truly... I think everybody knows how I feel about the President of the United States. I just think that, you know, there's a... And I think he's, I believe he's trying to divide everybody, and that's a whole nother issue for, oh, be great above us, but, you know, as Ms. Ramsey Smith said, you know, it's a step up, and I'm sure that, yeah, everybody would agree, and I think that, I don't know if Councilwoman, uh, do it because she was the one that brought it up tonight, if we, you know, maybe we should, you know, send some type of a resolution, you know, to the state, to all our representatives, our states, you know, our state senators, our United States senators. But this is not America, and it's a shame that, and I got, you know, as Mr. Reynolds says, teachers in schools, and I know Allen High School, I know Northeast, and Easton has a lot of poverty, and we have a lot of minorities in there, and these kids are great, great kids, they have great souls, they have great hearts, and it comes from extreme poverty, you know, some of them. And it brings a set of issues that you don't see in, in white, middle-class America. And it's time for us to, you know, step up, and I don't know if anybody wants to write a resolution or vote for it, but I think we got to, and it's just not the resolutions. It's what we do, it's what we say, and it's how we're going to... I just want to reiterate what everybody said, it's, you know, we are living in unprecedented times, I really believe it. I mean, I, you know, I try to, the kid, for some reason, I feel like we're back in 1969 again. It's crazy. And so, my heart goes out to everybody, the constituents, and, you know, the family of the gentleman in Minnesota. And it's time for change, you know? And the only way we're going to get that is by going out and voting. So I appreciate all your... And everybody spoke something about it, and if there's anything I can do to help or push along some resolutions or whatever, I'm all for it, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Callahan. Also, Mr. Callahan, if I could let you know, we're having a little bit of trouble with your audio. If there's any way that you might be able to increase your signal by moving your computer or closing down anything else that might be using data at your home. Is there anyone else on council who'd like to make comment? Mr. Cologne, and then Ms. Negron?
Thank you, President Waldron. I don't really have much to add to other members of council, having said already, other than, I am glad things have been going, you know, peaceful and well for these last few days, and I personally, you know, I'm someone who comes from a diverse family, Puerto Rican family. My youngest brother, who many of you know and have met, is African-American, and I'm still using now as a time really for listening, thinking that my experience and what I see and, you know, the life that I live, just reminding myself every day that, you know, my existence isn't the scope of all that goes on here in Bethlehem. And while I'm using this time to listen, I'm glad, as others have mentioned, now is, now is the time for listening and then to keep the dialogue going. So I hope we could really, and Chief, it's encouraging, you know, I know the department's trying to stay ahead of a lot of things that are becoming, whether the norm or, you know, ahead of the times a little bit, but keep all those things going. I was, I was glad to hear from Mr. Doybin, who called in, some of those things I thought were just common operating procedure in all departments across the country. They all sound pretty reasonable.
Not many, not many departments, that's the thing. We do have them here, but when you get to many smaller departments, they, they're a mess. They don't have rules and regulations or directives. That's part of the problem across the country. What you're all talking about is called criminal justice reform, because the system currently is broken. And that goes back to everything Dr. Van Werck said and everything Councilwoman Reynolds said, Councilwoman Smith said. What I said here, I stick by my comments. What I saw in Minneapolis is disgusting, and I'm not going to back off of that. And also, everything else going on. Americans don't act that way. Cops don't act that way. That was murder, what you saw on national TV, period. And I know murder, I've done enough murder cases in 25 years as a detective. You can check with both district attorneys on my record. So I stand by my comments, and if somebody didn't like them, well, I'm sorry. That's his opinion.
And while, you know, I truly believe Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, we're not going to be the ones to change the world, to change the country. I think we could continue beyond today. As we've had, and even, change is incremental. I said before, change takes time and effort. The calendar days are going to keep ticking away. I know the effort's there, and really just hope we could stay on task as we move forward. I'm proud of the city that I grew up in. I think we could all say we appreciated, whether it's the cultural diversity that go no further in South Bethlehem, and all the different churches and ethnic backgrounds that really built Bethlehem through the steel, or even just growing up in the city and the people I grew up around and the family that I come from, but really hope we can just continue again, not only now being a time for listening, but keep the dialogue going and continue to do whatever we can here locally. We're not going to change what's going on in DC. We're not going to change what's going on, even in Harrisburg necessarily, as long as we can all keep doing our parts to change what's going on here in Bethlehem. Thanks, everybody.
Agree with you, Mr. Cologne. This is going to take a change at many levels, not just the police level, political level, senate, state, federal, a lot of levels. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight. This is something that should have been done years ago. We're functioning, in my opinion, in a criminal justice system and policing that is about a good 50 years old. It's not what fits society today.
Ms. Negron?
Thank you, President Waldron. Well, I appreciate some of the comments that some of you mentioned. I also remind you that the change that we need, it is not about creating a resolution or a magic pill. It's simpler than that. It's simpler than that. You know, we have been taught, we have been cautioned, we have been advised that there is been misjustice, injustice going on in our, in our, in our courts, in our district courts to our brown and black people in our community. And everybody turned the side, looked to the other way. Oh, that's not happening. That is not in here. We, we are very blessed, we're very lucky that we have a great community, a beautiful community that I love. I chose to raise my daughters in and I don't regret it. But there's a lot of wrongdoing, a lot of wrong going on right here. We have been advised, and I know it because I hear the stories, but each one of us have been advised of wrongdoing in terms of the injustice to the brown and black people. Your constituents, your brown and black constituents have been, have been, are being, right now, every day, treated in an unjust way. You've been, you've been told, you've been cautioned, you've been warned. You did nothing about it. So, yeah, I am glad that nobody in the Bethlehem Police Department had killed any of our brown and black people here today, right? But the injustice exists. And there's no way for anyone to say otherwise unless you lived it, unless you heard the stories directly from the individuals that are crying, that are afraid, even myself. You know, I am, as all of you know, I am very proud to be a Puerto Rican woman. And I carry my flag. I even have a face mask now. My sister gave me the Puerto Rican flag. I'm afraid to wear it to some places. There's a lot of places that I will not wear my flag. There's a lot of places that even without my flag, I'm afraid to go. I feel intimidated. I feel afraid. And I'm not the only one. All of your constituents, all of your constituents, the seventy-six thousand people that live in the city of Bethlehem, all of the brown and black individuals have experienced something very similar. So we don't need a resolution. We don't need a magic pill. We just need to listen to what we've been told that is happening. And we need to do something about it because it is unfairness. It's like Ms. Councilwoman Smith said, you know, with liberty and justice for all. Really? Justice for all as long as you have light skin, gold hair and blue eyes. Because if you don't, there's no such a thing in here as justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negron. Chief or Mr. Mayor, is there anything else that you'd like to add on this? Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Do you want Mr. Carter to give an overview for the business opening Friday?
I think that would be apropos. So we're gonna transition here, one eighty, to talk about the business reopening that's happening this Friday. Specific focus on the downtowns and what the plan is to help support the restaurants. We did get what was sent out by Ms. Carter last week with some plans, some overviews and some maps. Obviously, a lot of work went into that and there's been a lot of thoughtful dialogue, not just within the city, but stakeholders as well. So if you'd like to give us just a little update of how you got there and what those plans will look like?
Sure. So, good evening. We did put forward this plan. I hope everyone had an opportunity to take a look at it. It's on our website. We've had a lot of press coverage over it. It's been all over social media and we've gotten a good response from the business community, largely because we worked heavily with individual businesses and with a variety of business associations to develop the plan. I caution you, though, as in any good plan, there is some opportunity for change and for alteration. And so we're already presenting it as if this is the feedback we've gotten from the businesses that they wanna see. But that doesn't mean when you walk out on to the south side on Friday, you're gonna see every one of these closures. Some of these businesses need a little more time to prepare. Some of them had presented their idea to us and said, meh, we need to order more tables and chairs or we need to revamp our process to be able to accommodate what we ultimately wanna do. There is also regular guidance produced by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. And there's a lot of inquiries as to alcohol, serving alcohol and what the limits businesses are operating under. And so while we don't advise on that aspect, we ask them to contact the LCB directly, there is some apprehension over not understanding what exactly will, will be enforced. So there's three primary components to it. It's street closures. It is parking space closures called parklets and its expansion on public space, whether that be sidewalks, city-owned space, redevelopment authority-owned space, Bethlehem Parking Authority-owned space. And so trying to give restaurants and retailers as much opportunity as possible to expand outside of their building footprint to serve the public. And so you've seen our examples. I'm certainly happy to take any questions you may have on it. I'm thrilled that as opposed to putting the responsibility on the businesses, we have the city have decided to build these parklets ourselves, build these structures and, and put that out there. So that the mayor is closing streets. The mayor is crafting the parklet so that that is a different approach than what we've seen historically, which gives greater opportunity for more businesses to take advantage of it and then just work with us to get the appropriate right-of-way permissions. I'm happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into this and it will be a plan that changes. You know, every weekend, I imagine, you'll revisit to see what was successful, what could be tweaked, how can we improve this? I get the sense there's a lot of built-up demand. So people may come out and obviously it'll a lot be weather-dependent too. Beautiful weekend, people are gonna come out to support those businesses and to be social. So obviously, we have our overview map of where the parklets will be located and what streets will be closed in those times. You know, looking at that, my, my immediate thought that jumped out to me, is that gonna be enough? Will those spaces potentially be overwhelmed by the amount of people who wanna come out? I know there's encouragement for folks to call ahead and make reservations so those businesses can know how many people are coming and they can withhold those capacity requirements. But if there's just an abundance of people who are out there, who wanna either be part of the dining experience or just wanna be there and be part of the energy of being in the street potentially or being on the sidewalk, is there thought to, to growing that space to allow for, for more tables or more pedestrian space out there?
Certainly. I mean, we are open to entertaining additional parklet opportunities and additional street closures from what you see on this plan. It's really gonna depend on exactly what you're talking about. How does the public respond? And we've been working with the Bethlehem Chamber to launch a campaign back to Bethlehem to, to ask people to come back into Bethlehem. It's a component of the vow to the valley, which is we're, as restaurateurs and retailers, gonna keep you safe. We're gonna clean and we're going to ensure that people are properly trained and provide adequate handwashing and sanitary conditions so that, you know, you feel comfortable coming out. And we in Bethlehem are saying, please come back to Bethlehem, come back and dine and shop and, you know, do all those things that you've done on the south side and, you know, the west side and on the north side over the years. And so we've seen restaurants try to limit the time period, like you get an hour and a half at a table. We're taking reservations. We're having specific seedings, you know, very structured to be, to say to people, make your plans to come back so we can accommodate you and see how that goes. And if we need to look at additional streets and additional parklets, we're happy to do that. And we facilitated some connections too with private property owners in an effort to open up some of the private space so that it is maximizing our outdoor availability.
Right. Obviously, it's a lot about a balance because you want to try to inject as many people and as many dollars into our downtowns as possible, but you need to be thoughtful about the safety of not only the visitors, but as well as the employees and those business owners. I mean, because in your head, it's very easy to remember the good old days of any of the many festivals that happens in our downtown and say, why not just close off all of Main Street? Why not close up all of Fourth Street or New Street and have a wide-open festival feel? And the reason for that is, is kind of obvious because then you're gonna have mingling. And anytime that you have alcohol, some of those social distancing requirements or mask-wearing or sanitation, that bar is gonna drop very quickly. It's not, you don't have to look very far past some of the weekends that Wouldn't Match has had live music and they've had tailgating there. And it's pretty clear that the social distancing and the mingling is pretty liberal that's been happening there. It's great to see people wanting to get out and wanting to support, but again, it's about finding that balance. So, I mean, I'm sure there was consideration to, why not just close off all of Main Street? And what, what some of those conversations would be like? Or the next question is, where do we have to get within our phases from red to yellow to green in order to potentially do that? Where we might be in the green phase, but indoor dining's not allowed, but we could have a more open outdoor dining experience?
So there's a couple of things. We worked with the retailers who don't typically wanna see the streets closed. So we've got restaurants that wanna maximize outdoor space because they can't have people inside under yellow. They can't go to fifty percent until green and frankly, even fifty percent is probably gonna be less than that based on social distancing and separation. So we've got the retailers on the other side who say, please don't close our streets completely. Please still allow us some convenient parking. Please allow us visibility through, you know, with the through traffic. And so we did actively talk about what streets in the fourth street quarter or Main Street, you know, could we close? And that's why it's so important to note that these aren't just our ideas. These are the business community's ideas in partnership with us. There's also the physical health to be concerned about if you throw a party. You know, there's a consequence to that. And so we're trying to not throw a party. I don't think we're, we're prepared for that. We're not ready for that yet. And so you see the hybrid approach that we're proposing.
Sure. I mean, it's, I think it's about starting conservatively because if you start too liberally, you're not gonna be able to tailor it back and say, oh, we opened up Main Street or, you know, Third Street too quickly and we were overwhelmed, so now we have to, you know, have more restrictions. So I think a more conservative approach, kind of feeling it out, is, is the best, best way to do it from, from my point of view. I wanted to talk more about the, the parklets. Will, I guess those will be semi-permanent? Is that a good way to look at it?
So we are, Public Works is constructing what are ultimately large planters and they're just gonna be placed in the street. So you might be thinking of a parklet that has sides and, you know, back to it and that has a raised platform. We're, because of time constraints and financial constraints and a desire to make it a wide-open space and have the flexibility to move planters around, we changed the model a little bit. And so you actually will have to step off the sidewalk and your tables and chairs will be placed right on the macadam. But these constructed planters by Public Works are really what are creating the safety outline, being the barrier between the seating area and, and then, and the traffic. So they've, they're in the process of making about a hundred of those. It'll take them a couple of weeks. And so Friday night, you're gonna see what are barriers and you're gonna see kind of other maybe less attractive features. That's not the long-term plan. We ask everybody to be patient until we can get all of these constructed and placed and, you know, and beautify the area at the same time. And so having that flexibility is a key component to this. So that if we put a parklet somewhere and they realize it's not working for them, whether it's a staffing issue or, you know, we move into green where they can go indoors and they don't wanna be outside and it's bad weather, we can move those planters to another area and accommodate a different parklet at a different location.
And will those parklets stay there seven days a week or they?
Yeah, they'll be there all the time. And we're looking at least through Labor Day, if not into the end of October, like our traditional parklet program.
And what will be the design or material of this?
They're wooden with soil and plants.
Okay. How, how will they be moved? You're talking about potentially?
Um, I've seen photos, so let's, you know, like.
Like a forklift? A forklift, how would they be moved? I mean, if they're weighing hundreds of pounds?
That's a great question. I, I don't know that they weigh hundreds of pounds, so please don't think that that's the case. When you're sitting on a table and chairs on a sidewalk, you don't have a hundreds of pounds barrier between you and a vehicle.
Right.
So it is probably movable by, by two public works.
Okay, they can be lifted?
Yeah.
That was my question. I wasn't sure if they were there as a physical barrier or a protective barrier because if you're thinking about being in what was a parking spot and there's a, you know, traffic there, your, your feet only from a vehicle. In the same point that you're saying, you know, in some of the spots on, on Main Street, you do have seating that is to the curb essentially, so you are still have that, that same distance.
We do. We have bump outs that you'll see tables and chairs on, which are typically the corners. Think of Tappus, for instance. They have tables and chairs all the way out.
Right.
Very similar situation.
Yeah.
When you narrow the road too, there's a natural calming effect of that. And so you may see some of the, you know, diminished noise. You know, we get these issues every year on mufflers and, and cars and so forth. We may see a greater benefit of narrowing that street, slowing traffic and, and making it more pedestrian-friendly.
And on that point of slowing traffic, I don't know if there was consideration of putting in a speed hump or two to potentially slow traffic even more, but I know that, that's not easy to do necessarily.
We did not talk about that in this first phase, but that may be something.
And I mean, if, if people, and that all depends, you know, how quickly people are driving down there and if people are cruising, if you will, and they wanna keep doing laps. Because people are gonna be itchy to get out to do something. And then my last question before I turn to the rest of council is, as far as liquor enforcement, that will be up to the individual businesses to make sure people are, you know, anytime people are on Main Street or on the, you know, Third Street or First Street, they have typically been there and the liquor laws are pretty lax for those festivals as far as you go into a restaurant, you fill up your mug, if you will, and then you can walk in the street and you can mingle. I think that muscle memory for a lot of people might still be there. So what is the encouragement and enforcement to make sure if people are getting a cocktail or a beer at a table, they're not getting up and walking, you know, down the sidewalk to another restaurant to talk to somebody they know?
Well, so a couple of things. So we aren't, aside from a small section of Walnut Street on the north side, which you're, you're used to being able to walk at Music Fest for those ten days or Harvest Fest or, you know, our one-off festivals. We're only closing that section of Walnut Street. So you're not hopefully going to, you know, trigger that muscle memory, which, you know, includes a complete street closure and the opportunity to carry. That doesn't mean we don't get a lot of questions because everybody wants to create a festival atmosphere all the time. And so we say the same thing we've always said, which it's the Liquor Control Board that issues the licensing for, for serving alcohol and it's LCE enforcement and certainly defer to our police if there is, you know, issues associated with that, that enforcement. But we don't advise as to whether or not they can pick up their drink at one location, walk down the street and enjoy it at another one.
Right. Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carter. I'm gonna turn to the rest of the council now to see if there's any other questions or comments on the reopening of our downtowns. Mr. Callahan? Go ahead, Mr. Callahan. You're on mute, Mr. Callahan. You're off.
Sorry, bud.
There you go.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Carter, I wanna thank you for all the, all the work you did and also the DBA. Did this, the LCB sometimes is very frustrating. And I know that, that, so the restaurants were allowed to sell a drink to go in a disposable container as per a week or two weeks ago. But then I heard, there was supposed to be a vote today to be, to relax or let the restaurants who have permission to expand their tables on the adjoining businesses, if they get permission, as of yesterday, from what I heard, the LCB was not allowing the restaurant owners to sell alcohol, although they could sell beer there. So I don't know, I haven't, I got home late, checked to see what, is there any, is there any information from the state in them relaxing that without having the business go in and get rezoned for their sale of alcohol?
So the LCB did issue guidance today that's on their website and we've distributed to the business associations. We don't interpret that for them, but we provided them with today's guidance. We don't interpret that for them, but we provided them with today's guidance, which does give them some direction related to expansion on sidewalks, um electronic applications and a almost an automatic permission. But again, I'm not interpreting that for you. You can go on the website of the L C B and you'll see it there. Um and and we have provided that to the businesses within the city.
So so they did pass it today then?
No, the L C B issued administrative guidance today. Which they can do for the emergency declaration in partnership with the governor.
All right. Um in in my second question is uh to uh uh the chief and the mayor. Um chief, have you, you got a second?
The chief stepped up.
I I would just hope that, I I would just hope that, I mean, my, I I my whole um genesis in trying to get as much activity possible for all these restaurants is that uh it it, number one, they lost a tremendous amount of income in the last three or four months. Number two, uh a lot of them are are very worried about a spike coming back in uh late fall, early winter, and that they would have to close again. A lot of them will not survive it if that has to go down again. And I think it's imperative on uh them and environment, all of them, not just restaurants, uh in an environment where they can increase their sales for uh, you know, a a a quick three, four months and uh have have some cash flow and money available to get them through uh, you know, a second peak or outbreak in the virus. Hopefully it doesn't, but you know, if it should come. Um so I would just hope that, number one, uh I I, you know, I'm all in favor of parklets. I think it's a great idea. And but it's, that's basically just good for the restaurants. I think what we need to do is come up and I don't know, I don't know what we do. I don't know if we close Main and Broad to, you know, one lane of traffic going one way and opening up and allowing the stores, the clothing stores and us like, you know, and things like that, having uh displays during nice weather out on the sidewalks and 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 out on the street, so people can socially distance but go shopping also. It's 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 not only a restaurant issue, but it's also uh other retail issues. And I I I think by uh coming up with a plan, whether it's, I I I totally applaud uh the work that's been parklets in 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 such, you know, such short notice, but I think that uh long-term over the next three, four months of the summer and early fall, uh September and early October, we need to try to come up with a plan where we can open up, you know, some of the roadways if we I mean, I I think everybody agrees that we're gonna have to socially dist long period of time. And I think that by giving more room to uh all uh businesses, especially retail, to expand area, to give people the uh more more socially-distanced area uh is gonna help them. I mean, our our whole thing right now is to try to help all these. The last thing we want to see is any businesses being closed down and boarded up, whether it's Main Street, Broad Street, Third Street, or Fourth Street, or anywhere else in the city. Uh we all lived through that uh at the end of the um Bethlehem Steel Closing. And it took uh a lot of administrations from uh from Mayor Cunningham all the way up to Mayor Donches for us to recover. And um uh our job right now is to try to uh give them as as much leeway as possible. And going into this weekend, I would hope uh that uh I I I know that the um the open container law is not an L C B. It has a um, it's a city issue. So I would just hope, I mean, I don't want people walking all over, you know, neighborhoods, but I think if they're an essential business district, let people get out there and and hopefully the police department um will have, you know, some um you know, s- some room for uh allowing people to have an open container, if, you know, if they're having, trying to create some social distance while they're having a a dinner or a, you know, a cocktail on Broad Street or Main Street or Third, Third, Third and Fourth Street. I mean, the last thing we need to do, you know, right now is to be uh is to have strict interpretations um of of some um, you know, laws that, you know, that are gonna prohibit people from, you know, from going out and in 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 enjoying themselves, you know, especially during this, um, you know, the warm weather months. So I I I would hope that, you know, the chief um and the mayor could um, you know, come up with some guidelines or just some general, and and listen, our police department's been awesome, uh wh- you know, whether it's been Music Fest, uh Harvest Fest, or uh uh or Celtic Fest. I, you know, it's, yeah, they were very tolerant of that type of activity, and I would hope that they were, you know, would do that now. Uh again, and I uh appreciate all the work with the parklets um on on behalf of Ms. Carter and the D B A and getting that up and running so quickly, I would just ask that we uh possibly look into expanding um out into the streets. I know that's a whole nother issue in slowing down traffic and traffic flow. But uh I think with the um coronavirus, there's, there's a, you know, severe decrease in amount of traffic on our roads right now, and I think it's very doable. And I think we need to give uh uh not only the restaurants, who are majority of the people who got the parklets. I think by opening up the street uh to uh other vendors and 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 um retail people to expand their sales area on, you know, on on warm weather days is is the least we could do. So uh again, I appreciate everybody's um work on this, and thank you.
So allow me to apologize if I gave anyone the impression this was only for restaurants. It's not. We have retailers that are have the opportunity to operate both on the sidewalks and in the parklets. There's a couple of things you don't see here too, which include um future plans that haven't been completely ironed out yet. We've been working with the Southside Arts District and with C A D C P on a Greenway Fair to provide additional space for retailers uh and restaurants and um others to go at, personal service to go out and expand their footprint. So you see a lack of personal service opportunity here. It's really hard to have a space where you're cutting somebody's hair and you're eating, for instance. And so that's the last phase of the state's um uh uh opening. And and so there's, there is a lack of information, and we're still working on ways to be able to accommodate those businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Mr. Callahan, is there anyone else who'd like to make comment or ask questions to Ms. Carter regarding the reopening? Thank you. Um is there anything else uh the administration would like to add?
That's my report.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Reynolds, you have a finance committee report?
Uh yes, the finance committee met tonight uh at six P M. Uh the committee agenda included the following items. Uh review of the proposed amendment to Article one twenty-one point one-two uh titled Bond Issues General Obligation. Uh and uh that proposed amendment notes and lines of credit to Article one twenty-one. Uh Finance Committee voted two to one to send the proposed bill to full council um for review. And uh we also reviewed a uh proposed adjustment to the general fund related to the Public Works Department's uh budget. Um and uh the Finance Committee voted to pass along that adjustment with a recommendation of three zero. Um and that bill is on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Um in our time here, I I did get uh notice that uh a public speaker was unable to call in, did make an effort, but wasn't able to connect, so we're gonna reach out to them at this point.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Gallagher, Bethlehem City Council.
Thank you, uh President Waldron. Thank you, uh council members. Always thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um I want to speak uh for a moment about to go back to the the George Floyd matter and start with an attaboy to pick up uh Councilwoman uh um uh what's the Councilwoman's name? It's too late for me here. Uh uh the Councilwoman talking about the attaboys that that usually come uh from from council there. Um I I've really only been paying attention to um uh to council very closely for two and a half years. President uh Mayor Donches has been around for a quarter century. Uh my sense is, though, that he's a man who doesn't seek the the spotlight, uh doesn't seek the the limelight, uh doesn't come out and speak much. That's just from my two and a half years. I may have him totally wrong. But when I saw his statement on Sunday, I thought he must have been really moved uh to uh to do that, to come forward uh like that. And I was hoping he would read his statement into the minutes here. I'm a historian, and those minutes are the history, the first level of history of Bethlehem. Uh the documents that people will go back to uh in the in the future. Let me read two short paragraphs from the mayor's May uh thirty-first, twenty-twenty statement. "The kind of behavior we have seen in Minneapolis has no place in America or anywhere in the world. We in Bethlehem must condemn acts of violence and hatred and are deeply saddened by the loss of life of a fellow human being. This is not just a race issue, this is a human issue, and we are all connected by our shared human experience." This is a time for outrage. Uh this is a, this is a time for outrage, but it is not a time for violence. The hatred that comes from racism, bigotry, and intolerance will not be condoned or supported here in Bethlehem or anywhere else for that matter. We are one. Our anger and abhorrence must be converted to something more positive, to hope, to faith, and to love." That's an attaboy to the to the mayor for that. And um an attaboy to the chief for his statement. I'll I'll be interested in going back and reading that. Uh I I I think the chief said it's it's posted on the Facebook uh page. It's good to have those things. It's great to have those things. Um but I wouldn't be a gadfly if I didn't nip. My nip would be to go to the incident of September eleventh uh uh twenty nineteen in which there was a uh traffic stop uh rolling through a stop sign at Sixth and and Hayes. The incident uh mentioned by the uh my former Lehigh co- colleague in the statement that uh Councilwoman Van Wert uh re- uh 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 read. Um I covered that a lot on on Gadfly, and the mayor ended that dialogue on February eighteenth uh saying that the charges of uh unprofessional behavior and uh illegal activity um were deemed by internal investigation uh to be not true. And uh uh end of story, there would be no um further comment uh on on that. I think you gotta say that uh reasonably from the outside, uh one can be skeptical of uh a judgment like that made by an internal review. Um I don't know all the legal uh matters involved, the personnel matters involved, the contract matters involved. Uh it seemed that there was an executive uh meeting before the February eighteenth meeting. Maybe it was about this. Maybe council was glued in and agreed with everything that was going on. But from the outside, um that issue did not uh come to to closure. I don't know what the answer is, but uh the chief has affirmed that we're going through all the training and the guidelines and the national recommendations and certifications and things like that. Let's add on uh thinking about how issues like this, when they come up, and they will, are handled. Are internal investigations, um the end-all and be-all of situations like this. Do we somehow need more transparency uh with the public? Uh more trust from the public. Remember that the Public Safety Committee on on March third um did not take up the issue at all. That was very curious to me, not even to mention it, not to say that we 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 know about what happened and uh, you know, we've seen the facts and we agree with what's going on. Trust us, uh the decision made was 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 okay. Um so I'll I'll follow along with some of the uh the other statements made, that there's more to be done beyond those attaboy texts uh to uh to to make sure people in the public uh can uh can uh can trust the procedures that are going on. And the one I would have you not forget is, how are these investigations done? Thank you so much, Professor, uh President Walden, for this extraordinary uh allowance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. We will be moving on with the rest of our agenda this evening. No ordinance or final passage, moving to new ordinances, nine A.
An ordinance to the City of Bethlehem Counties of Lehigh, Northampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the twenty-twenty general fund budget.
Discussion? Clerk, clerk, would please call the roll?
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan? Mr. Callahan?
Mr. Mr. Callahan, you're up for a vote on ordinance nine A.
The general fund budget adjustment.
You're on mute still?
I I actually lost the connection. I had to come back in.
Understood. You're up for a vote on ordinance nine A. Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye, passes seven zero.
Ordinance nine B? Oh, pardon me, huh?
Resolution ten A.
Yeah, I thought we had another one. Pardon me, uh moving to resolutions, resolution ten A.
Be resolved by the Council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller and or such other city officials as deemed appropriate are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with A E Com Technical Services Inc. for wastewater treatment plant process upgrade evaluation and preliminary design efforts. Resolution is sponsored by Ms. Negron and Mr. Waldron.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Cologne?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye, passes seven zero. Resolution ten B?
Be resolved by the Council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller are hereby authorized to execute a grant award document for funds to be received under the twenty-twenty coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand sixteen dollars. Grant will be used by the Bethlehem Police Department to add and replenish personal protective equipment and upgrade mobile radios located in police vehicles. The resolution is sponsored by Ms. Negron and Mr. Waldron.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Reynolds?
Present.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye, passes seven zero. I know it's getting late, folks, but let's try to get it, the wheels back on the tracks here a little bit if we can. Uh resolution ten C?
Be resolved by the Council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller and or such other city officials as deemed appropriate are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Brockalanti Construction Inc. for work related to Carlton Avenue reconstruction. The resolution is sponsored by Ms. Negron and Mr. Waldron.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wert?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Cologne?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye, passes seven zero. Resolution ten D?
Be resolved by the Council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller and or such other city officials as deemed appropriate are hereby authorized to execute a lease agreement with Art of Flight Golf Inc. and other documents necessary for the operation of an indoor golf instruction technology and fitness facility. The resolution is sponsored by Ms. Negron and Mr. Waldron.
Thank you. Mr. Kelcher, since you've sat with us for this long, is there anything that you would like to add? Okay, uh for those of you who are unable to see, Mr. Kelcher is here, um is able to answer any questions on the approval of the lease with Art of Flight Golf. Mr. Callahan?
Thank you. Uh Ms. Kelch, I just wanna thank you for your uh, you know, all the work that that you've done over there. Um the golf courses, it has come a a a long way in the last year, and uh I know we still have a little bit of work to do. Uh and and we discussed that when I was over there um in in the past few weeks. So uh I just wanna say thank you to all the uh uh all your employees and yourself, you know, for all the hard work and dedication to the facility. Uh it's looking awesome, and I'm a hundred percent in favor of this uh of this uh lease tonight. I think it's gonna be a great addition uh to the facility over there, and I'm looking forward to it. So again, um thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Ms. Ramsey Smith?
Yes, I just have some simple questions. I'm just wondering what Art of Flight Golf is? And what the clientele are, who the clientele are?
Larry's come up the podium, on his way up. I'll just, I'll just tell you, there's another exciting opportunity for Bethlehem Golf Club, and it is Larry that brought this uh deal to the table that we can meet and work uh with this group. uh, deal to the table that we can meet and work, uh, with this group. There are clear synergies with this opportunity. It will inc- increase golf activity, increase visitors to complex, increase passive income, and the form you're looking at now is a triple-net lease, meaning there's no financial exposure or risk to the City of Bethlehem or the golf course itself, the way it's set up. So I'll let Larry explain the lease.
Yeah, the customers would be the general public. And anyb- anybody is welcome to come.
And what, what is the program? I guess, is it like lessons or what?
It could be, it could be lessons, um, indoor golf in the winter, um, fitness. So, um, there would be five, um, TrackMan simulators. So basically, their business model, um, is the exact opposite season as ours. Daylight savings time ends in November. Their busiest time of year will be in the, in the winter till daylight savings time starts. They'll be open all year, but, but they're prime. Basically, you can't golf in the winter in the Northeast. So, um, but indoor lessons all year round, training.
Okay.
It's basically like an indoor simulator for golf.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kelsner? Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wirt?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Cologne?
Aye.
Ms. Krampsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye. Passes seven zero. Resolution 10E?
Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Bethlehem that the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan for fiscal year 2019 for the City of Bethlehem for the period from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2019 is hereby approved and that the mayor of the City of Bethlehem is authorized to provide the necessary assurances and certifications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and to submit the fiscal year 2020, 2019 action plan for HUD approval. The resolution is sponsored by Ms. Negron and Mr. Waldron.
Discussion? Did you want to add something, Ms. Carter? Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Brett. Uh, Mr. Brett is here. He's our Housing and Community Development Administrator. He is new to the role since January, and this is his, uh, first outing to, uh, city council, so thank you. Um, no comments or questions on this resolution? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wirt?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Cologne?
Aye.
Ms. Krampsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye. Passes seven zero. Resolution 10F?
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller and or such other city officials as deemed appropriate are hereby authorized to execute a use permit agreement with Permitty Mount Airy Neighborhood Association and Sub Permitty Fagley Enterprises, Inc. In connection with the West Side Farmer's Market, the resolution is sponsored by Ms. Negron and Mr. Waldron.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wirt?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Cologne?
Aye.
Ms. Krampsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye. Passes seven zero. Resolution 10G?
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem that the mayor and the controller and or such other city officials as deemed appropriate are hereby authorized to execute a use permit agreement with St. Luke's University Health Network for the impact through infusion initiative events. The resolution is sponsored by Ms. Negron and Mr. Waldron.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wirt?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Cologne?
Aye.
Ms. Krampsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye. Passes seven zero. Resolution 10H?
Be resolved by the council of the City of Bethlehem, uh, that the council hereby approves the applicant's request for an intermunicipal transfer of Pennsylvania Liquor License Number R18906 from Sagra Bistro LLC, formerly licensed to 620 Main Street, Hellertown, Northampton County, Pennsylvania, to Wilbur Restaurant LLC for the license premise at 202 Wyandotte Street, Bethlehem, Northampton County, Pennsylvania. The resolution is sponsored by Ms. Negron and Mr. Waldron.
Thank you. Uh, I will note that Mr. Noble is here as well as Ms. Noble. If there's any questions or comments to them, they are available. Uh, is there anything from members of council, um, for resolution 10H for the intermunicipal liquor license transfer? Mr. Callahan?
No, I just wanted to reiterate what I said earlier. I think it's gonna be a great addition. Uh, I think when everybody gets a chance to go in there and see the interior of that building, it's, it's, it's unbelievable and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy that that facility's gonna be up and running again and back in use. So, again, thanks to, uh, the owners for, uh, you know, investing in Bethlehem and I wish them all the luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Dr. Van Wirt?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Cologne?
Aye.
Ms. Krampsey Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Negron?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye. Passes seven zero. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, council.
Is there any other new business from members of council? Ms. Krampsey Smith?
I know it's late, so I'll try to be brief. I'm just, I guess it's directed to the mayor. Um, I'm just thinking about the kids and the city, and I know we're not gonna, the pools open and possibly not the playgrounds, but I'm wondering if we, if we can look at maybe alternate activities or, um, opportunities for the kids, even if it be like virtual programs, or can we even have the rec department like maybe reach out to businesses to see if they will donate like maybe Crayola or Arts and Crafts or something that, you know, especially I'm thinking of the kids that are really, um, are suffering and they, they don't have the, parents maybe have lost jobs through the virus or they are low socioeconomic status and can't afford to buy things that are gonna keep them busy and, you know, out of trouble this summer.
The answer is yes. Ms. Evans is working with the health department on some alternative programs.
Great.
And there is, there is a chance, uh, as I said before at the opening of the meeting, that we, we will review the possibility of opening the parks. Uh, not the pools, but I would say at the moment, we, we are evaluating opening the parks.
Okay. Thank you. Cause I'm just hearing from a lot of people that, you know, it's naturally they're very disappointed and I, it's just so important that we have opportunities for, you know, some students, for some children will have opportunities and some will not. And it's just important that we give opportunities to all. So, thank you.
Any other new business for members of council? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.